Thank you for coming. The City of Laurel has some very good information that we want to provide with you tonight. First of all, I'd like to introduce my colleagues, President Mike Lesz, Mr. Smalls, Fred Smalls, Valerie Nicholas, Donna Creary, and my name is Ed Ricks. As many of you know, the city has been for over two years now, working very diligently to make sure that our railroad stop stays in place. It was a very, I want to thank Donna Creary, my partner in crime on this. She's been there all along for us to get this done successfully. We've had some difficult times. We had to find a way to make the new train station work. Not the new train station, but our train station. CSX was very stubborn about permitting additional time on the lines. What Donna and I came up with, in consultation with the rest of my colleagues, we found out that CSX already allot's time on the line for flag stops. Now, a flag stop is just like you walking out on the street and raising your hand and flagging down a taxicab. So, we thought that over and we presented that to the Department of Transportation for the State of Maryland, to Senator Rosenpepp and the 21st delegation, and we also presented it to CSX. CSX was not too happy about that, but nevertheless, we finally got the pressure on them enough that it worked. There are seven flag stops up and down the Camden Line from here, Baltimore or Washington. Three of them currently exist at the train station, excuse me, that Laurel Ridge, down from Philadelphia, wherever. So, there were three there that were in the afternoon. Why the afternoon? I have no knowledge. So, our suggestion was, take the three that are in the afternoon, State of Maryland, and we finally got a yes. So, then after that was gotten, we got an MOU, a memorandum of understanding, from the state, keeping our train station open and adding the six stops over at the racetrack. I've got to watch that. Okay. So, that solved that problem for now. Now, the problem is for the City of Laurel, we thought maybe we'd be over with this situation, but we're not. Because what we figured out was, that as they build the new development in Howard County, and certainly appears that it's not very popular over there with some of the citizens. So, what we found out was, that Phase One and Phase Two of that development would allow 500 houses to be built. Good evening, welcome. Those 500 houses, if you try to come up with a formula that would indicate, you know, how many passengers for the train station, it would occur, it's very difficult to know at this juncture. But what we do know, is that their railroad station over there will not be built until Phase Three. So, where are these people going to go? How are they going to get on the train if they want to ride the train? They're going to come to Laurel. And Laurel doesn't have any space for them. We put out over 500 and some flyers the other day, announcing this town hall meeting. And going through all those parking lots, there wasn't maybe one empty spot. So, we have to continue, as a council, to be very prudent and stay on top of the State of Maryland, and make sure that they build us a parking garage that will accommodate not only our growth, but the growth that already exists here in the city. We will continue to do that. The state has already, twice, hired a developer to develop the property down there to allow a traffic garage or parking garage. Both times, the contractor that state employed failed. In December of 2015, when I was then President of the Council, I wrote a letter to Secretary Pete Rom from the Maryland Department of Transportation. In that letter, I asked him to give us the property at the railroad station, and laid out the fact that we have the ability, we have the knowledge, we have the resources within the city to build and to develop that piece of property down there in a way that will allow us to have those parking spaces. I got a letter back from him, and he indicated, because of all the activity in and around the City of Laurel, that it wasn't a yes and it wasn't a no. So, I, myself and my colleague, have been very vocal, very present with all these meetings, and we have gotten a little bit closer. And we've had quite a few people that have come out here and worked with us to try and find out exactly what we're going to do. This development in Howard County, if it goes as planned, they won't start till probably sometime late last, next year, on Phase One, Phase Two. Some of our other concerns is that they're not dealing with the walking traffic that will come up and down Route One. If somebody misses a train in Laurel and wants to walk up to Howard County when Phase Three takes place, then there's not adequate safety on the sidewalks and pedestrian travel. So, we're working very diligently to have them, to have them, you know, respond to our concerns in that manner. Ms. Creary and I have recently written another letter to Mr. Rom. I was hoping to have an answer by tonight, but I haven't. Again, bringing his attention to some of the issues that the City of Laurel is facing. TOD, there's a transportation-oriented development, by definition, is not supposed to impact on any other development around that transportation-oriented development. And what they're doing, what they're allowing, is for it to impact on the City of Laurel. We don't mind the development, but it has to be done in such a way that it doesn't affect us. We want business, yes. Traffic, something we have to work toward. So, we are working very diligently to continue to do that. We meet on a conference call, once a month, on the third Thursday, and Mr. Fleming and myself and Ms. Creary and some of our staff people are in these meetings every Thursday that we have one. And they give us updates, and we ask questions, and we get answers to some of them, and some of them we don't. So, we will take questions anywhere along this process, so don't be shy. We want to make sure that the public knows exactly what we've been doing, because it's been a long time since we've had one of the county town hall meetings. But we really haven't had anything substantial, except the MOU, which is a big deal for us. But we're waiting to get some answers on this parking issue. So, does anybody have any questions for me at this point? Yes, ma'am?
I have a question.
We have a microphone for you, so everyone can hear.
Well, I'm listening to what you're saying, and it sounds like revenue is what the key is, or the benefit to Laurel. But there'll be revenues for this parking structure?
If you would start it again, please, I'd appreciate it.
Well, I don't talk well in front of a microphone.
That's okay.
But we're going to generate revenues, because we're going to be charging people to park from Howard County for this Phase One and Phase Two?
No, we do not charge, the State of Maryland does not charge for parking at any of their stations, that we know that exist here. What I have done some research, and what we do know, is that they charge down in Greenville.
Okay.
And they charge in some of the other stations. So, if we get this property, we, the city, will develop it. There'll be a combination of retail, coffee shops, cleaners, things like that, that people that ride the train can pick up or take, they can pick up their things or leave their things off while they're working, and they can have it done. It also may have some housing units to it, but the parking garage is what we're after most of all.
Okay. And it sounds like the State of Maryland is going to donate that property?
The State of Maryland owns the property, but they have not seen light.
To the City of Laurel?
That's correct.
And your goal is to have them give it to you, without a cost?
But our goal is two things. One, get the state to develop the property and give us the parking garage that we need.
Okay.
If we don't get that, then they can give us the property and we'll develop it ourselves.
Okay. So, you have a plan in place, or you have a work on a plan?
We have a plan in place.
Okay. And the last question, because I'm new to Laurel, I've only been here two years. So, the next question would be, would the council consider putting, and I know, I was going to say this is a county issue, would the city consider working with the county to put some affordable housing units in developing that little area, which you're talking about?
Affordable housing has not come to light at this particular juncture, because what we have to do is go do a cost analysis as to what it's going to cost and whether we can afford to do that.
Okay.
We don't know, I have not been able to find out what the value of the property is down there now.
What if you get CDBG dollars?
Say it again?
What if you get CDBG dollars, Community Development Block Grant?
We would take any resources that we could get in order to accomplish what we need.
Okay. Very good.
Okay. So, yes, ma'am?
Let me just explain about CDBG dollars. It doesn't meet the census tract requirements for community block grant money. In fact, if I remember correctly, now we don't have any place in the city that meets that requirement. Mr. Smalls is agreeing with me. That money is allocated for Eric. This is not mine, someone else's.
Put your hand up, please.
It doesn't meet...
Trying to find a safe spot.
When you bring the issue up, there's not a census tract in the city that meets that requirement. Okay? And there isn't a lot of money available.
Something we might have to look for, to try to do something like that.
Well, let me just put it in perspective. To build a parking garage costs about $15,000 to $20,000 per parking space. Per parking space. Okay? If you look at where the parking is along the Mark line, that's been furnished by the state, it's free. Go down to the Brickyards, that parking is free. Laurel is free. Most of the parking along the Mark line is free because it's owned by Mark. Okay? They have requirements. I don't remember exactly what the number of parking spaces, 500 and some, down at our station, and part of that's owned by the Legion. Not even owned by Mark. There's an agreement that the city has with the Legion to allow people to park there during the day. Okay? So, it's a very complicated issue. I'm just telling you, we've looked at it for 20 years. Okay? And the real problem with the Camden Line, it is a two-track line. When Mr. Ricks talks about, there's only so much, so many windows of opportunity for passenger trains, it's because CSX owns the line, and it is primarily a freight line. And they will not allow you to run willy-nilly on the line with passenger trains, unfortunately. Okay? Because they use it for, I'm sure you've seen the trains come through Laurel, they make a lot of noise. But if it was a three-track line, then you could have put trains on side tracks to allow other trains to go through. So, if a CSX train is late, it takes priority now. Okay? That's part of the problem with the passenger line. It is not unique to this part of the country, except here you've got two major metropolises with one of the oldest tracks in the United States, and it really is hurting things. I mean, if you go over to Odenton, which is the Penn Line, that parking lot is completely full now. I mean, I've gone, I've gone on both stations to get to Washington. There's not enough parking for people to get to where the trains stop. Okay? So, the idea of putting a parking garage up, then you have to have something offsetting the cost of the $15,000 to $20,000 per space, if you build a, what they call a structured parking facility or a parking garage. It's a very complicated issue. And as Mr. Ricks said, the transit-oriented development, two developers, proposed plans. We don't have a plan for the property, we have a concept. In other words, nobody's got the engineering plans, they fell by the wayside. I think that all we saw was the elevations, if I remember correctly, red for, yeah, we saw something, the last developer, but they didn't option it. And let me point one other thing out about the Howard County. These are not single-family homes they're going to build up there. It's intense development. Apartments, townhouses. Okay? So, when Mr. Ricks says they're going to build X number of units, and they're not providing any parking, or they're not going to develop that, if you go up and look at the train station, it's nothing but a wooden deck, there's some rocky stairs leading up to it. Okay? I've gone down there and watched people not get on the train, not flag it down, because there isn't anybody there in the morning, there's no lights on the thing. Okay? So, it is a very complicated issue. And as Mr. Ricks said, the people in Howard County are very upset about that development. They've packed the council chambers up in Howard County twice about it. Okay? So, when he says it's going to be next year, something's going to happen. I don't know exactly what's going to happen. If you've been down to the Brickyard, you know where the Brickyard is, down Beltsville? That's what's all going up on the left-hand side of the tracks in Beltsville. High-density housing, townhouses, some condos, there's some single-family homes, but they're separated like this much, okay? High-density housing, and big bucks. But that, again, is free parking, and more people are getting on at that station now. So, it's a complicated issue.
I think we're trying to pitch it, where would this parking garage be, and how high would it be? The parking garage that you would build in Laurel, where would it be?
Well, there are two pieces of property down by the American Legion, and what we're looking at is developing both of those pieces of property. They're about a, about an acre, what I'm saying. About an acre each one of them, and what we can do is, we could build and then have a tunnel through to get to the, to get over to the American Legion. There are many other concepts that we've looked at, we've talked to people down there in the area, and see whether or not they're willing to sell any of their property in order to build it. So, we just have to, we have to get the question answered first, and then sit down with the state and see how we fund it, and whether we can get grants. Yes, ma'am?
Magic fits to be right about, right here? Okay. Can you hear me? Okay. Isn't that a floodplain, though? Because many times that lot has been closed when the Hudson runs over its banks. And they have recently redone the redistricting and expanded the floodplain, too. So, is that a good idea to try to build down there?
We have to take that into consideration, certainly, if you know what that is down there. But maybe Mr. Fleming can speak to the new floodplain regulations that have recently come out. We'll go through that one. You want to go ahead now, Marty? Go ahead.
While discussing this project, we have been fully aware of the, at the time of the beginning of discussions, the floodplain map amendments were concepts, but now they have been approved and they are in effect. But we have been discussing those, and there are ways that you can mitigate the floodwaters to either go under or around any structure. We will not be able to develop anything in the 100-year flood without mitigation efforts, and those mitigation efforts would have to be approved by FEMA. So, we're very cognizant of it, but parking lot developments are one of the few things that can be constructed in a floodplain relatively easy, but there will be mitigation efforts that we will have to consider.
Thank you, Marty. That answer your question? Thank you. Any questions? Anybody up? Okay. Let me touch on part of the other news that we have. As some of you may have known, a number of years ago, 20 years ago or so, there was a race here in town, it was called the International, and it was a big draw up and down the coast, the East Coast. And the racetrack is putting a lot of money, I've heard the figure of $30 million, into that racetrack to bring it up to par. There is some feelings that they should be looking forward fixing up Pimlico. It's a political football at this particular point, there's legislation on the books, the State of Maryland, that requires Pimlico to remain open. But what we know is, they're not spending their money on Pimlico. They are now building extra barns, brand-new barns over there that are sprinkled, safer for the horses and the people to participate. They, the barns they're building are 146 stalls per barn, and they're supposed to be building between 15 and 17 of them. They're certainly looking at building a hotel on the property. Best Western is just in the middle of building on Route One, northbound, right by the old restaurant that was sitting there in that little valley. And the only reason why they're buying that property, because there's like four different hotels in, right in a row, is because they know that they're making all these efforts to develop that racetrack. And so, they're talking about bringing additional races, bringing the breeders out here, bringing the Breeders' Cup from California here. And so, it's a lot of, we've been trying to get a meeting with them, and so far, we have not been able to do so. But we know what's going on, not to too much extent, but nevertheless, we're still working on trying to be as knowledgeable as we possibly can, because it impacts on the city. It's like, we're working on that aspect. Donna, refer to anything else?
Yeah, I think the, what you had touched upon before with the station, not being developed until Phase Three. One of our major concerns was pedestrian safety. There used to be a bridge back before '72, and I think Mr. Fleming could correct me, or the chief, that was wiped out during the flood. It would be nice if that pedestrian bridge came back, but we haven't made any progress in that area, because nobody wants to pay for it. They have agreed to sidewalk improvements from this new development down the north side. There's no mitigation plan for the south side, which we take issue with, because obviously people are going to have to cross over the north side to come down to our main street. So, there's going to have to be crosswalks, preferably like the one in front of the Selbourn House. And additionally, we would welcome their business to come to our main street, but there's no room to park any vehicles in our train lot at this time. So, if there's no additional parking built, or the station built, then you're going to put 500-plus pedestrians on that sidewalk, coming down to our station. So, that would be one of the issues we're working on, too. Thank you.
So, we know these things to exist, and we're working diligently to have them corrected and participate in the development, so that we're not left behind. And so far, like I said, we're pretty happy about how we've been received by the state and the Department of Transportation, so we will continue to do that. But again, just wanted to try and let the citizens know, you know, what we've done, what we're doing, and make sure that you had any additional concerns, that we could certainly work those into our plans, and see if we can't resolve any of those issues. So, with that, I've also asked Mr. Fleming to kind of bring us up to date with some of the other construction that's going on in the city, and make sure that you all are aware of what we're doing. Fleming, go back.
Good evening. Thank you all for coming out. A couple announcements from the mayor's office, and he apologizes for not being able to attend this evening due to a conflict. In recognition of 9/11, we will be hosting an interfaith prayer event to be held out in the Memorial Garden in front of this building on Sunday, September 10th, at 5:00 p.m. Everybody is invited, we would love to have you. Light refreshments will be served after that function. A couple projects that we have been working on, sun to completion, that the general public has been paying close attention to. One is what we've already discussed, the flood map amendments to the City of Laurel. On June 16th, last year, the flood maps for the City of Laurel were amended. The maps prior to that were created and approved in 1985. Between 1985 and 2016, a lot of development occurred, not only in the city, but upstream from the city in Howard and Montgomery Counties. We have published the maps, and we are currently working with affected property owners. We have some properties that, before the map adoptions, were very close to the 100-year flood, but not within the 100-year flood, but that has now changed. Notifications have gone out to the property owners. However, recently, changes in FEMA regulations, and primarily due to funds that FEMA used to provide to subsidize flood insurance, have been removed. They are now looking at flood insurance rates that, prior to the adoption, would have been a couple hundred, a hundred dollars a year. Well, now they're looking at flood insurance that is a couple thousand dollars a year. We have one development, where we have about 40 units. It's a homeowners association, so the association itself is responsible for the exterior of all the structures. They're looking at an annual increase in their insurance cost to cover flood of about $136,000. So, we are working very close with them to try and work them through the process of obtaining the insurance at a rate that's, that's not going to be counterproductive to their efforts to maintain their community. Coupled with that, we are working with the Corps of Engineers, FEMA, the county, and the state to develop options to mitigate the 100-year flood. We have recently met with consultants, and we have developed what I call a shopping list of projects that will potentially reduce the flood impacts... of projects that will potentially reduce the flood impacts and possibly move quite a few of these units out of the Hundred Year Flood that recently were brought into the flood because of the map amendments. This is not going to be a fast or quick process. This is going to take some time, but we are working diligently. And this effort, hopefully, will be funded partially through grants. If you're familiar with the flood regulations, there are mitigation funds out there that will cover design and construction of mitigation efforts. However, you don't qualify for those until the properties affected are actually brought into the Hundred Year Flood. So we actually had to wait for the map to be adopted and put into effect before we could make application for these funds. Prior to that, we spent about a decade using internal staff to develop concepts that we would hope will mitigate the flood concerns. One project that you will probably see come along fairly quickly is the removal of what we call snags. These are very large trees that are falling into the river. There's been disputes over the last decade about who is responsible for the removal. We have basically taken the position right now that until we can decide who is actually responsible and who's going to cover the costs, subject to grant availability, we've been removing these trees. Our residents and our businesses are the ones that are affected by these snags. So we basically feel that in an effort to be accommodating for these residents and businesses, we took it upon ourselves to start removing some of these trees ourselves. In our discussions with the consultant and representatives from the state and FEMA, some of our efforts can be, the cost of our efforts can be recovered. Along with that, we have been working on amendments to our preparedness guides. We have what is commonly known as an emergency operations plan for the entire city. We now call it emergency operations guide. There is some legal precedent to that. If you call it a plan and you stray from the plan, then you are subject to liability. I've been an emergency manager for quite some time, and I know that practically every emergency we've dealt with, no two emergencies are the same, and sometimes the plan just doesn't work. So we need the flexibility to, on occasion, stray from the plan, which is why it's now called a guide. We have recently comprehensively looked at the guide and made changes to it, brought it up to current federal standards, and had it approved and adopted by the Marion City Council. Along with that, we have just completed work on our continuity of operations plan. And this is a plan that we employ when we lose critical infrastructure. If we were to lose power, for instance, this building has a whole building generator, so if we lose power, the generator would kick in and take the place of commercial power. That's continuity of operations. If this building is damaged by a storm, fire, or whatever, we have an alternate location where we can set up at a moment's notice, I'll say for the most part, and pick up the critical pieces of the operations and business of the city and conduct business at other locations. So that's basically what the continuity of operations plan is, that has recently been amended, and we are preparing that for approval. A lot of calls have been coming into City Hall about donations for Harvey, and I'm sure we'll be getting a lot of calls about donations for Irma. We have been, as recent as a month ago, we executed an agreement with the First Baptist Church for the First Baptist Church to fulfill the role as a donation center. If you're not familiar with the church, it's off of First Baptist Lane, off of Cherry Lane. It is a very large structure, and they, in concert with other Baptist Church groups in the area, they handle donations on a routine basis. So we worked with them, and we developed a plan and executed an agreement with them to work for us to be a donation center in the event there is a local disaster or a national disaster. So our emergency manager, Steve Allen, met with them today to go over finalizing the plan for setting up a donation effort. We have approved the date of October 7th, 2017, from 11:00 to 4:00 at the First Baptist Church, and that address is 15,000 First Baptist Lane in Laurel. At this donation center, they'll be accepting monetary donations, which will support the purchase of crisis support buckets for the victims in Texas and Louisiana, in coordination with the Baptist Convention of Maryland and Delaware. This is something that we elected to support. This is something they have done very many times in the past. And in concert with requests coming from emergency managers in the affected area, this is something they are desperately looking for to distribute. We are also opening up a donation point for pets. We'll accept monetary donations for pets at this location. And we are currently working with the city's animal health officer, excuse me. I'm sorry. No. Yeah, Dr. Wodzinski of the Rocky Gorge Animal Hospital. I apologize. He was appointed and confirmed by the council to be the city's pet physician, and he has been working with us on developing a shopping list of items to go into kits to support pets. We are also putting together health and hygiene kits, which we understand are one of the priority needs for victims of Hurricane Harvey. These would include large bath towels, washcloths, combs, shampoo, toothpaste, et cetera. And these are items that you can bring to the donation center, or again, you can, we can accept cash at this donation center. All this will be put together and packaged by volunteers. We've already made arrangements for transport carriers to load the products and either transport them to an airport to be flown, or actually carried overland to the affected victims. So if you're interested in donating, we encourage you to consider this. There are very many donation options out there, as you're probably well aware, but we would appreciate any help you could lend. We have been receiving questions relating to economic development in the city. I would just like to say that the mayor appointed and the council recently confirmed Christian Pulley as the new director of our development management office. She's been a senior planner in that office for a number of years now, and she replaces Jack Brock, if you're familiar with him. Just as a summary, we have annexed in this last year about 32 acres of land, and those 32 acres equate to about 1,618 residential units, constructed or currently being constructed, 72 of which are townhouses, duplexes, or single-family dwelling units, and 1,546 are apartments. And I would just like to add to that, that there is a waiting list for all rental units, whether they're single-family or multifamily units. There is a waiting list of people wanting to rent. I, as a homeowner in the city of Laurel, when I heard the, initially heard the monthly rental cost, I was kind of like taken aback, but this doesn't appear to affect anybody. The first apartment complex that was renovated recently was located at 4th and Cherry Lane. That was, they had contracts for all those units before the last nail was driven, and they still have a waiting list. So we have one more apartment complex that is coming online now, and they still have a waiting list that extends out beyond a year. I was kind of surprised at the demand for rental units in the city, but we have, as a result of changes at Fort Meade and bringing onboard the cybersecurity complex out at NSA, we have quite a bit of transient residents in the city. We have had a number of road transfers in the city. There are three different types of roads, or actually four different types of roads in the city. There are private roads that are actually owned by an association or individual. There are city roads that are owned and maintained by the city, county roads and state roads. Over the years, we have, because of the proximity of these roads to our Public Works Department, and the fact that these roads serve our residents over the years, we have been providing some limited services to these areas. Basically, we're not going to, we're not going to bypass a private road packed with snow that is the primary point of access to our residents. So we do provide some services on these private roads. So we actually negotiated the transfer of a private road and four county roads to the city's asset database for roadways. We are now collecting the highway user revenue tax associated with these roadways. Basically, since we've been providing these services, we are now collecting the cost of providing those services. One road in particular, Dorset Road, that was a private road, if you're familiar with that. It's down the street here, about a quarter of a mile. That road had fallen into such a state of disrepair, we had on several occasions closed the road down. Because it's a primary point of access to over 1,300 residents needing fire and EMS and law enforcement services, we took the road over and we reconstructed that and brought it up to current standards. And that was an arrangement, a friendly arrangement that we had worked out with the homeowners' Those of you who live in certain parts of the city are probably painfully aware that Washington Suburban Sanitary Commission and the Baltimore Gas Electric Company is working on their infrastructure within the city, and quite a few of our roads have been absolutely torn to pieces. I just want to assure you that as part of their infrastructure repair effort, the repaving of these roads is in the winds. It is our hope that the road networks in Laurel Hills, Farallon, and Old Laurel will be repaired before the onset of winter. The big question we have is Old Laurel. We have a section on 9th Street where we might not be able to accomplish that because of some issues that they are having connecting a very large water main to an existing water main. So they may not be able to make that connection before the onset of winter, so we might be dealing with patches there. But we certainly thank the affected residents and those that travel those roads for their patients. We have been very diligent, I believe, in staying on the Washington Suburban Sanitary Commission especially, getting their contractors back out there to repair temporary asphalt that has failed. In a few minutes, I would like to invite the chief up just to talk about an event that he is sponsoring. But I would like to provide you with an update on weather. I've been asked to give you the latest. This comes from the Maryland Emergency Management Agency. They have a weather contractor as well as we do. Basically, I'm not going to tell you the location of the storm. I think everybody here knows it's in the Caribbean. But the forecast that they have received, which is in concert with our consultant, basically Hurricane Irma will be downgraded as soon as it comes ashore. The remnants of Hurricane Irma will travel north, eventually reaching the Laurel region, probably as a tropical storm. They are predicting at the moment, assuming that occurs, anywhere from half-inch to one and a half inch, inches of rain within the Laurel area with wind gusts between 20 and 30 miles an hour. Currently, there's no watches or warnings declared for Maryland, but I can assure you that our emergency manager is paying very close attention to the track of Irma, and now we have another storm coming up behind that. So we will be paying very close attention to that. I have brought with me probably enough for everybody in the room, if you're interested. There's a checklist of equipment that you might need to prepare for the eventuality, and it also has some do's and don'ts. So you're welcome to take these. And chief, if I could ask you to just...
Thank you, Marty. You're welcome. Good evening. Thank you for coming out. As most of you are aware, National Night Out, which was held last, early last month in August, was rained out. It was a very unsuccessful event due to the rain. So what we did is we decided we were going to do it again. We will be hosting a emergency services night, which is basically a part two of National Night Out, and that will be on September 19th at 6:00 to 9:00 at Laurel Gootie Lake, or at the Gootie Park. So if you have any interest in coming out, there's going to be a lot of demonstrations. It's going to be geared towards public safety in light of being Public Safety or Emergency Preparedness Month. We're going to do demos on the type of preparedness that we have and the available resources that we have in the surrounding area. So again, Tuesday, September 19th, from 6:00 to 9:00. And I hope to see some of you there. Thank you.
Okay, with that said, there's one other thing that I'd like to mention to you all tonight that we're extremely happy about, and that is the success the mayor and some of the council members have made with keeping our hospital open. It was a difficult thing for them all to do, for all of us, but we recognized from the beginning that we didn't believe that it was the kind of operation that they were making it out to be. We felt and had information to the contrary, and Mayor Mo and Dr. Kellner.
Pardon it.
Doctor, they worked very diligently, and they found out that it was a saving. University of Maryland has put their monitor on the hospital, and they committed $50 million to make sure that the hospital stays here and brings Laurel up to date with emergency services. We're extremely happy with that, and I hope you all as well. So any other questions? Yes, Paul?
The Marcus Colwell case, it's going into its eighth month now.
It's the what?
It's eighth month, Marcus Colwell investigation. I have not read anything official coming from the city concerning that investigation. In case people don't know about Marcus Colwell, he was a Public Works employee, and he was on the job, and he was killed by somebody operating a motor vehicle recklessly in a residential 25 mile per hour street. Such many, many lives and hearts in Laurel. And I'm just concerned, I mean, the mayor boasts about transparency all the time. This is going on in the eighth month. Has there been any resolution to that case at all, criminal or traffic?
To my knowledge, there are not.
Mr. X, if I may?
Yes?
The case was prepared by the Action Reconstruction Group. It was presented to the state's attorney's office. The state's attorney's office now has control of it. We made a decision due to the fact that it would be the state's attorney's office that would be prosecuting and pursuing the charges that are in existence. The press release and the update would come from the state's attorney's office because it's kind of overstepping our boundaries, doing a press release based on information from the state's attorney's office. So it is in the state's attorney's office. It is going to be prosecuted, and it's all resting on the state's attorney.
Is there any timeframe at all that they're giving you?
No. I mean, you know, it's in the court, it's in the court system, it's going through the process. As, you know, there's extensions, there's continuations, there's all kinds of things that occur.
This person has already been charged?
There are charges from the state's attorney's office, yes. The state's attorney's office...
Are we ever going to be notified on those charges and who this person is?
I'm sorry, is who?
The public. Are we ever going to be notified on who this person is? What the charges are against that person?
No, if it was to be, if that was to be released, it would come from the state's attorney's office. The state's attorney's office is the... The state's attorney's office is the one that is prosecuting and pressing charges. It was turned over to them, they're the ones that are, that are issuing the indictment and the charging documents.
Any other question? This man.
Would you please repeat the question once she says it?
October 7th, for money to the First Baptist Church, is that also where the towels and washcloths and items are on the same date?
Yes, ma'am.
It's only that one date?
Yes. Right now, it's only that one date. We're trying to coordinate volunteers to stack. If we get more, we might open up several other dates.
And how do we know about that?
What we will be putting out press, we'll send out text messages, emails, every avenue available to us, the social media will be...
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes?
I have one more. Memorial Day weekend, I've been a big proponent of enhancing the safety of the industry. Memorial Day weekend, we had a armed robbery of a armored car, U V and U Bank, Main Street. We had an armed robbery of MAPPA Auto Parts, I believe it was on Monday of the Memorial Day weekend. We also had a pedestrian who was struck by a vehicle, a minor, and he goes to the city, but he was hit on Main Street. That was just the Memorial Day weekend. Has there been any response to the maybe, the possibility of the rise in crime or the safety? I get a lot of complaints from the senior citizens of the Selborn House also that have to stop traffic in the middle of the road or dead crosswalk. Do we ever in the future see more police presence or possibility of police officers being assigned to that area because of the rise in crime and safety in that area? We have a lot of senior citizens, and I understand there's gonna be another. We already have a methadone clinic, and I believe two or three rehabs on Main Street, and obviously, we know that they will always work to the benefit of the public around that area, and they're supposed to put another one in there. Is there anything else as far as police, signing a police officer to Main Street or getting more police presence on Main Street?
To my knowledge, no at this particular juncture, but I would like to speak to it. But, let me speak to Selborn House. The city council has spent a lot of time and effort and money down there, Selborn House. And I am retired, I spend a lot of time on Main Street, and I don't see anybody from Selborn House standing out in the middle of route of Main Street and stopping traffic. I see them using the light that we put down there for safety, but the words that are coming out of some people's mouth down there are just not true.
Chief, you want to speak to the other part?
Yes, unfortunately, we did have the robberies, both of which have been closed with arrests. The individual, I've spoken with the individual that was in the crosswalk, citation was issued. We, on a regular basis, have officers on Main Street, randomly patrolling, randomly doing radar enforcement. Corporal Johnson spends a lot of time on his Segway up and down Main Street on a regular basis, as does Officer Jackson. So, the officers are there. I do not have the manpower to station somebody on Main Street. That, that is an unrealistic request at this point, based on the calls for service that we're handling. The city has grown. We are, as we can sporadically or randomly do radar enforcement, traffic enforcement, pedestrian safety throughout the city of Laurel, we're doing it. But unfortunately, there's a lot of different areas, there's a lot of target areas that we're concentrating on. We're concentrating on Cypress Street, we're concentrating on Fourth Street. There's a lot of areas throughout the city, not just Main Street. So, we are doing enforcement, and as time permits, you will see more enforcement. But I'm not, I cannot put an officer on Main Street or sign an officer permanently on Main Street.
Hey, yes, ma'am?
I just need some clarification. I don't drive a train, and I don't know all these stops you're talking about. You talked about six flag stations, one three in the afternoon and three in the morning.
There were seven flag...
There's seven, but where's the seventh one going?
Where is what?
Well, you said there were three at the racetrack, and then, and the afternoon, and then you're adding three in the morning at the racetrack. So, what happens to the other one?
The other one still exists somewhere. We were not aware.
You're not aware?
Yeah, I don't care.
So, what, what's, what's the stoplight at the Laurel Station? I mean, it's just, Brad was riding...
We had, they had three flag stops there at the beginning.
At the Laurel Station?
At the Laurel, at the racetrack.
Is that, what's the difference?
Flag stop is where it's...
No, no, what's the difference in the location?
What's the difference?
Well, when I think of the racetrack, I think, I think of it off the line. So, I'm asking...
That's where it is.
Okay, so I'm asking about what, what do you have in Laurel at the station?
We have eleven stops.
Are they at the station or the station downstairs? I know you're doing, I'm asking about the stops. How many stops are there? How many?
You're satisfied with the six stops that we give.
At the...
At the racetrack.
Now, I'm asking, what, what kind of stops do you have at the train station?
I believe, I believe we're talking about, you're asking about what type of stop?
Well, yeah.
The platform? There can be flag stops. All our, all our stops are full-time stops.
Okay, at the Laurel Station. Okay, how often are those?
How often?
Yes.
Well, there's a schedule. I don't have a schedule with me.
So, it's not like once or twice a day?
No, no.
Okay, because I don't want to presume.
That's just my race track.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Just on the Howard County side, there is some, there, there has been some development as far as on the Howard County, whether the track, the racetrack side, and they have made a wall trailer.
From, yeah, from there.
Yeah, you seen that?
I've seen that.
And the, you, it's going towards the other, other racetrack.
How can, how can they try to make a nature trail all through?
Yeah, a nature trail.
I think what they're trying to do is that they're trying to connect their nature trail with our nature trail. All along Riverbanks and both. Our Director of Parks and Recreation has been working very closely with our county, and so that's part of that.
They won't go under, or what they're gonna do for the town.
We're trying, we've got a danger gear working on that right now to come back with. I mean...
That's one of the concepts that's being included. I'm sorry. That's one of the concepts that's being included in our flood study. We're looking at how we can get pedestrians from one side of the river to the other and not impede floodwaters or debris that's coming down the river. We have considered tunnels, that's not gonna happen. It's gotta be some kind of, of a bridge, and we're looking, currently looking at designs now.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am?
I am aware that there's a city council election conference this year with early voting on November 4th and voting down the 7th of November. I was curious whether there are any plans to have a candidate debate or meet and greet of the candidates ahead of that, so the public can learn more about who's running and what their position is.
I really did not plan this meeting to do or talk about anything political. The Board of Trade has made it known that they intend to try and do something, but I don't have any more information on that. Like I said, I don't wanna get into politics. That's not what I'm talking about.
Is there someone from the Board of Trade that's here this evening?
I'm here. And yes, we're gonna do it. We're, we're planning to do it at this point, so we just haven't got it out yet.
Okay, great. I think we can talk after this.
Thank you. All right, anybody else in council?
Councilman Rix, if you would allow me, I'd like to sort of expand on your comments regarding Laurel Regional Hospital. I think it's, it's worth letting the folks here know the efforts that have been made by the council, by the mayor and others to get to the point where we are and, and beyond. So, if you would, for your information, over the last 10 months, I've sat on a strategic planning work group composed of leaders from the University of Maryland Medical System and the Greater Laurel Community to evaluate and formulate recommendations for the transformation and modernization of healthcare services at the current site, Laurel Regional Hospital. This 11-member executive committee was co-chaired, as Councilman Rix mentioned, by Mayor Moe and Dr. Steve Bartlett, surgeon in chief at the University of Maryland Medical System and Chair of the Department of Surgery at the University of Maryland School of Medicine. The executive committee members and meeting participants included community business leaders, elected officials, physicians, EMS leadership, employees, labor union representation, and many other key stakeholders. Over the course of the work group's tenure, seven subcommittees were established to address core elements of healthcare services currently offered at Laurel, and how they could be refined to offer a broader range of services on a modern medical campus that is both convenient and patient-friendly. The subcommittees looked closely at anticipated future needs, evaluating the likelihood that the services offered will contribute to the overall improvement of community health, financial feasibility, long-term sustainability, job opportunities, retention, and career growth for the highly valued current and future workforce. The subcommittees included emergency medicine and EMS, campus development, clinical operations, on-campus services, workforce development, behavioral health, volunteer services, which was chaired by Councilman Les, and Councilwoman Nicholas was a member. On June 5th, after hearing final reports and recommendations from each subcommittee, the steering committee, the steering executive committee voted unanimously to formally submit each of the subcommittee recommendations to the board of the University of Maryland Medical System for consideration, potential adoption, and implementation. The University of Maryland Medical System board with a team of clinical and healthcare financial advisors are evaluating the recommendations over the next few months. While we can't predict or promise that the University of Maryland Medical System will adopt every aspect of the proposed recommendations, there is a high degree of confidence that the array of services provided in Laurel will be more comprehensive, advanced, and of a higher quality. The enhancement of the campus will be a win for residents, the workforce, and the community, and quite frankly, we deserve it. Under the leadership of experts from the University of Maryland Medical System, the University of Maryland School of Medicine, the level of clinical expertise will greatly improve. Services that have been long needed, such as enhanced behavioral health, orthopedics, urgent care, observation, laboratory, and clinical care create a potential to reinvigorate the Laurel medical campus into a robust destination for quality academic-level healthcare. Recommendations also include steady art operating rooms for high acuity cases. The redevelopment of the campus will likely provide for an array of auxiliary healthcare services to include mixed-use opportunities that will promote health and wellness. We might expect to find a campus with one-stop shopping for all of our healthcare needs, from acute care, prescriptions, primary care, specialist appointments, operations, chronic disease management, healthcare education, behavioral health services, and more. The submission of recommendations to the strategic planning work group by, rather, the strategic planning work group to the University of Maryland Medical System Board is just one of the many milestones toward a new era of healthcare in Prince George's County with the Greater Laurel Beltsville area as a key priority. I just wanted to make sure everyone knew the efforts that have been underway and are still ongoing. We are, the council and mayor, we're still very much intimately involved in developing that hospital campus into something that will serve this community extremely well.
Thank you. Would you like your microphone? Here?
I have the names and numbers of several people out here, so I'd be happy to provide them for you.
Shouldn't the supervisor know who the person, what particular, that's in the background they are, or what race they are? They should ask the question, because then it would be a big thing, and that person's family history, that maybe needed to be noted, from the ER. And they assume just by looking at someone that's not there to the patient, or is it a poor quarter, as you know, this, and I've had that experience in July of 2016, and someone looked at me, and assumed was asking me about my ancestral lines.
Okay.
I'd like to comment on that, if you don't mind. I've served in three roles at the hospital. I'm the hospital chapter, patient relations, and volunteer services. So, I definitely appreciate your comments, and I'd like to talk to you further, because I'd like to, you know, investigate that a little further.
It's a teaching point, I mean, it's a teaching point, just to prove it one way.
Right, well, I'm just, that's not the message that we'd like, that like to send out. So, I'm very sorry for that experience, but I, you know, I'd like to talk about it more if you'd like to, and I'll give you my, if you ever come back to the hospital, I'd like to give you my hospital cell number, so you can call me, we can walk through the process together. Everybody?
Yes, ma'am?
I was curious, I am very excited to hear about the, the progress that's being made at the hospital and before with the University of Maryland Medical System. I was curious if you could discuss at a kind of a high level, the funding streams or the, the financial structure for this concept, because I think I heard earlier that you mentioned a figure of $50 million, which will not go very far. We're trying to create a state-of-the-art medical campus. I built websites, and we built websites for $3 million, and that doesn't include any medical equipment. So, you could talk about how, how the medical system is being funded and how, how we're moving forward, you know, where's the money coming from? What's University of Maryland kicking in, what's City of Laurel kicking in, what's the states kicking in? Do you have any thoughts?
Let me, the, the ball, let me put it to you this way. The ball has been in the court of the state and the county. They're the ones that have obligated 500, about $500 million for the medical campus at Largo. Okay, if you remember, what they said was they were gonna close Laurel. What's gonna happen is it turns out in looking at the building at Laurel, it's gotta come down. It no longer meets the needs. It's old, it hasn't been maintained. What you're gonna see, and I don't know whether 50 million, I saw 77 million. That, okay, that, that will all be generated through the University of Maryland Medical System. Okay? They will generate the funds required to build the first building. First building will have, what, four operating rooms?
Yeah, it'll be a freestanding medical facility. The campus, the full campus development will be partnerships by private, private entities as well as some other means of financing it. But, the University of Maryland is not going to develop the entire campus. That's never been the plan. We have already been talking with a number of health, wellness, and ancillary kinds of, of businesses that will have, that have a great interest in being a part of that campus. So, it'll be a partnership between the University of Maryland, state contributions, county contributions, no city, and private.
Okay, so the original building, the core building, that is the one that the University of Maryland has obligated themselves to build. So, that would be emergency services, the operating rooms, a limited number of beds, observation beds, not over, not for long stay. For long stays, you get transported somewhere else, whether it's down to the Largo Medical Center or wherever. Center or wherever. So that part, that's the part that the University of Maryland will be involved in at the beginning. And then as, as Mr. Smalls says, there's going to be partnerships. The Medical Arts Building is a private building. It pays taxes. You'll probably see some additional structures like that on the property. It's a big piece of property. And that will be a partnership, you know, public-private partnerships. Part and parcel of that's attracting the doctors to come back. Okay? But there will be an emergency room, there'll be some operating rooms, there'll be some observation beds. The other component that was mentioned by Mr. Smalls is getting a lot of attention is behavioral health. There are not enough behavioral health facilities, either in, in Columbia or in the county. They're all overloaded.
Right.
So that's probably going to be, there'll be something that happens in that respect as they build out the campus. And a medical campus is a way to look at it, with several buildings, not just one building.
The word here is campus. It's just not going to be one hospital, a series of hos, of, uh, medical facilities of different types, so that if you need behavioral health, you're going to go to this facility or how?
We currently have the commitment of the University of Maryland for the first building, and we don't, at this one, have commitments for any other development of the other buildings on the campus, but.
That's the, that's the public and private partnership that they're going to develop. Excuse me.
I wonder if it has called the mall? Been, I don't know how long now, two, three, four years? I'm wondering if it is indeed successful and sustainable, and have we gotten what we talked about at the Laurel Mall?
I think, I think the answer to that is yes, because the University of Maryland would be giving their money and effort into it.
She's turned around.
About Town Center?
The Town Center?
Yes.
Eddie Town Center?
To what?
Talk about Town Center.
Yeah, I got it, yeah. The Town Center, so far, has been doing well. They're by the old, they've had some, you know, the sports store went out of the, and I read the paper today that Gap loans Old Navy and that sort of thing. Old Navy is the thing that the kids go to now. So that's staying, and they're making a blue-booze amount of money. And so we've just put a guitar store in over there, and there are a couple other ones that are coming up that, uh, and the old Safeway store is going to be divided, and part of it's going to be an Aldi's. So we're moving, a little bit, but we're building a lot. Anybody else?
Yes, sir. Go back, switch back to the hospital real quick. Um, the hospital is not a nonprofit. I was just wondering why the, uh, no money coming from, um, to put into the hospital. Maybe you can get a return for that.
It is nonprofit.
You don't have that kind of money for.
It is nonprofit.
Invest in a hospital? Well, I mean, I'm, I'm not saying you have to put all of it up, just like this, this is broken up. I would have to put a few, few dollars in to get, to make a few dollars back.
It's nonprofit.
It's a nonprofit.
It is nonprofit, yes. And it's, it's the University, it's the University of Maryland Medical System.
Right.
They own the campus downtown. They own 11 other hospitals in the state, because there's a new, a, a, a new roadmap for hospitals. It's not putting somebody in the hospital and leaving them there for a month or a week.
Right.
You know, two or three, two days and you're out, observation. So it is a nonprofit, is what it is.
Oh, I didn't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I heard, I heard the private.
Well, but, 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 but like I, like I explained, the Medical Arts Building is private doctors in that building, so you may see some more of that on the property. But primarily, the healthcare is from a nonprofit organization.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question, some reference, Methadone Clinic, when we were talking about needs for the clinic. Where is the Methadone? Is it a combination for me, and is it part of the full house or?
I don't know which one.
It's to the rear of Red Hot and Blue, that shopping center, down where Hey Red is. Hey Red, Hey Red is on one end, it's at the very corner, is a methadone clinic.
Is it a private?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's in the back behind, you go in the side, the back driveway, like you're going into the back, and it's, I, I, I don't have the particular information on it, I just know it, it isn't in existence, it's state-certified, it's, it's a state sanction where, or has all the certifications, all the requirements, and it is acting as a methadone clinic.
Anything else?
Because the chief asked that question. Has that been an issue in, in Main Street?
No, it has not. We had one issue, one incident there several years ago, which was quickly rectified. Uh, you know, it's business as normal. We have not made any, I wouldn't say we've made a lot of arrests as a result of it. You know, obviously, it's the same as any other parking lot, it's the same as any other area, arrests do occur. It's not, it's not what I would consider a habitual problem area. But again, you know, as part of the random patrols, as the officers go through the area, they do check it, and they do maintain periodic checks. What we, what we refer to as a periodic check, which is just a random check, random ride through, it could be anything. Could be a walk-through, it could be a segue, it could be a bicycle ride, they do go through the parking lots.
So with the, with, like, the governor been making a big fight about not, not the, not the methadone, but, uh, what is it, the oxy, code, uh?
The opioid epidemic.
Big issue.
Yes.
There was, speaking of what I called, talking about those robberies on Main Street, there was another robbery of the pharmacy, uh, down by Laurel Lakes. And, uh, was that an issue about that epidemic then?
Which pharmacy? Are you referring to the one that's on the other side over by the Pizza Hut?
Yeah.
Okay, that, that's Prince George's County. I will tell you that all the pharmacies have been informed to keep any of their opioids locked up in a separate vault, um, which most of them are doing. Some of them have actually stopped carrying anything. So I, I can't answer that question for that, because that wasn't in our investigation, it wasn't something we were involved in, it was something the county handled.
But I mean, just because it's been inside of the safe, uh, these, I mean, these people, it seems like they just want what they want, and they busting through glass doors and carrying handguns and all types of stuff to get what they, what they want. Do we have any concern about that?
Again, we, my narcotics unit keeps an eye on things. Um, the officers make random checks through the parking lots, the shopping centers where the pharmacies are located. We try to do walkthroughs of the pharmacies. Um, in fact, I've been to the pharmacy on Main Street several times, had conversations, discussions for improvement of their security, and, you know, it's, yeah, is it, is it something that's occurring? Absolutely. Do I think it's a habit, it's, it's a problem here? No, but it could be. You know, there, we, we currently are carrying the Narcan, which is the reversal agent for the opioids. So the officers are carrying that. As of right now, we've had three saves. So i- it is occurring. We're not having the epidemic problems and issues that Anna Rundle and Howard and the other surrounding Western Maryland are having. However, it's starting to drift this way. So we are aware of it, we're monitoring it, and we're trying to do whatever we can to deter it and or make sure that we don't get overrun with it.
One last, um, instead of, to stand it short, I, I've seen my, my, um, this fourth in Main Street, I always see, and I, I'm, I'm very happy to believe, even though my child is not at Laurel in Main Street no more, but I, every morning, they're sitting right there at that parking lot, and, you know, to watch the children, I'm, I'm, anyone first was that. What about as far as some type of camera or something on Main Street as far as the, I've seen, uh, I'm crawling across from the PNC Bank, I saw guys, somebody even parked behind my office on, and, and walked over, going in December and robbed the PNC Bank, got in their car and left out, and, um, beating a T, this armed robbery of the armored truck, all types of stuff, man, is there, do we have any type of funds, maybe to put some type of camera system? We, the building owner that I'm at, we, we put cameras on the building and, but put it off the street itself, so it's there. But is there cameras that can be placed?
Well, let, let, let's, there's a couple more, there's a couple questions there, I think. First of all, there are cameras on Main Street. We utilize the bank cameras, business cameras, we, when, when an incident occurs, we go and see if there's cameras, surveillance cameras in the local vicinity that are privately, publicly owned. The city, we are in the process of, we're evaluating the Wi-Fi on Main Street, which would include some surveillance cameras. However, those are great to say you have, and it's great, but nobody's going to sit there and watch those all the time, because you would go stir crazy if you were watching them all the time. The, um, the intent is, is once these cameras are installed, they will be stored on a server. So if we have an incident and the cameras pick it up, we can go back and review the video and see if the cameras were beneficial as far as capturing the incident and or what led up to the incident. The downside of that is, is that is a false sense of security for a lot of people. Today's technology, let's be realistic, it is not dependable, it is not always functional. So just to say, oh, there's cameras, you, you must have got it. We, I can go into a pharmacy today and show you that, okay, the camera's not working for whatever reason, or somebody forgot to turn it on, or they forgot to activate it. You know, it's, it, it's great if it works, but I wouldn't want to hinge an investigation on these cameras. That's why we do the surveillance, we go through and, and do an inquiry and a neighborhood check to see if there's any cameras that are available that may have captured it. I'll tell you what, those ATMs that are up and down Main Street are phenomenal. The cameras that are on those are absolutely amazing, again, when they work. And just so we're clear, I, I didn't mean to imply that we're short personnel. I, I, I have three vacancies for police officers. What has happened is, is this is not the small town anymore. We're running, these officers are handling probably 100 to two, probably 150 to 200 calls a day. That's a lot of calls, that's, you know, our, our typical squads are nine personnel. So there are days where we have overlap, and those are, those are the days that I love, where I have 16, 14, 14 to 18 working a shift. So with that, I can do my special details, I can put them in plain cars, I can do whatever, you know, or they can identify target areas that they want to concentrate on, the pedestrian safety, what, the crosswalk patrols, that's up to them, the radar enforcement. It gives them a lot more ability because there are so many officers out there. But in the same, at the same time, they're also handling the day-to-day calls for service, which 200, 200 calls a day for the City of Laurel is absolutely amazing. So we're, we're, we're moving in the right direction, and as I said, I have three vacancies for officers. We're in the process of trying to fill them, and that'll put us up to full staff.
Sounds like we need volunteers too.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. We answered everybody's question. Thank you all very, very much for coming tonight. As soon as we know something new on the parking issue, we'll make sure that you all know it. And I appreciate your time, and thank you very much.